Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thank you all for coming. First order of business is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board. Welcome back from fall break. A few things I'd like to highlight tonight in my report since our last meeting. As you know, we are a part of the Indiana Urban Schools Association, and we had our regional meeting in Wayne Township before the fall break. And two things that came up on that agenda that I want to bring to your attention is legislators are putting a lot of focus right now on third grade reading and retention. As you know, when I Read Three first came out, there was a retention component to that. They allowed some good cause exemptions and other flexibility to that. What we're hearing is that there may be legislation in this upcoming session that would remove some of that flexibility and that retention would be mandated. Certainly something that that we don't fully support because there are a lot of different situations for for kids there, but we'll keep an eye on that. The second piece of of conversation there that we want to pay attention to, legislators are looking at the taxing structures throughout the state, both income, property, and states. We want to keep an eye on that because we do benefit from some of those structures. ISBA IAPSS Fall Conference was right before fall break, and Warren was a presenter to that. So Julie Howard, myself, and Matt Parkinson were a part of that, and we presented on our legislative forum. Speaking of legislative forum, our legislative forum will be January 27th coming up in a couple of months. And I want to highlight some sessions that many of us attended on engaging and empowering our community partners and parents. And I know, Board, that is a topic of our, one of our upcoming work sessions, how we can improve and increase that for us here in Warren. Right before break, I attended the Batel for Kids at Leader 21 Annual Event. This is a conference for districts like Warren who are implementing Journey of a Graduate skills. Doug, Ryan, Kim Griffin, Travis Koemer, Tamika Johnson also attended so that we can learn more about how this looks at the elementary level. I do want to highlight that Indianapolis will be the host site for that next year. We hope to send lots of staff and board members. If you would like to attend, we'd love to have you there. And I'm excited and proud to say that Warren was asked to be a site visit location to showcase the work that we're doing with JOG and our college and career readiness. So we'll be ready to go next October. I attended the Warren High School Performing Arts Play Clue onstage, another great performance. Last week, and I'm not going to steal Doug's thunder here, but last week, we had several folks, including Rachel and Employee Indy Visit Nashville. Doug is going to share a little bit about that this evening. We had an exciting visit over fall break thanks to Gloria's connection to Benjamin Brown and Vicenn's Aviation. Doug, Dr. Rogers, and I met with Benjamin Brown, who's a Warren class of eighty-four grad, and Mike Gayrich, who's class of eighty-six, on the possibility of bringing aviation program to Warren. This would be twofold. It would be a mechanics course and an aviation course. Our next steps there is they're going to come visit Walker Career Center, and our hope would be to bring this to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Board, as you know, we completed our second of three days of school board visits. Our next visit is Thursday, November ninth, where we will be visiting Pleasant Run, Renaissance, Lakeside, Sunny Heights, Brookview, and Eastridge. Hopefully, you can make that. Couple of spotlights I'd like to real quickly go over. Dr. Anderson and I hosted a staff of color breakfast for certified and classified staff right before break. With our focus on belonging this year, we centered our conversations around conditions where our staff of color felt like they belonged and conditions when they felt like they didn't belong. Powerful conversations. Tierney and I are going to meet with that group again and communicate with our leaders of how we can create conditions to improve that. Many of you participated in the summer graduation ceremony before break. We held graduation for those summer graduates. I want to give a shout out to Masimba and Michelle for doing a wonderful job of getting those kids to that point and celebrating them. In Vision Day, you're going to again hear this from Doug tonight, was a phenomenal event. Thank you, Board, and community for participating in that. As you know, that is working on our next iteration of our vision statement and what knowledge, skills, and experiences we want to include in our next version of our Journey of a Graduate. In Vision Day Two is November eighth. We are going to refine the input and feedback that we received from day one, and Doug will share more of that tonight. I want to give a shout out to the Warren Central High School Gold Brigade Marching Band for winning the Class A State Championship. They will perform a, yes, good job. They will perform an exhibition. I did find out it's an exhibition, but they were asked to come perform an exhibition at this week's Open Class Championship down at Lucas Oil Stadium, which is a great honor for them. Last but not least, October is Principals, Directors Month. We gave them a gift by not inviting them tonight. We are going to invite them later on this year. I just want to give a shout out to all of our leaders, our principals, our directors for the great work that they do for our students, staff, and families. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. The next item of business, well, we don't have our... Is she here? Oh, my goodness. You should have been up here. Threw me off there. Yeah, please, come on up. Come on up. We have our Student Council President, Kavia King. And please, talk to us about what's happening.
Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well. I don't have much to discuss today, so I'll just get straight started. This has been a successful year for Student Council this far. It is our hope that we continue to learn through positive experiences, grow our leadership skills, and implement leadership qualities and strategies that we have gained through the services that we provide. Currently, we have helped over seven different organizations this year with Student Council volunteers successfully planned the Homecoming Dance, supported and raised money for the Pink Out Cancer Initiative, and we are now gearing up for our annual, sorry. And we are now gearing up for our annual WHOA fundraiser and our leadership retreat. Lastly, I do want to give you guys a glance at what's going on next at Warren Central. So girls' basketball started their season today, actually, with the game against Whiteman this Friday, October 27th. Our football team will head into sectionals against Perry Meridian. We also have a Walker Career Showcase coming up in November, and we hope to see all of you guys come out and support. Have a great night.
Yeah, hey, hey, don't do that. You've got a seat here. That's all right. You just come up here and say, hey, I'm here. Take your seat. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. You want you to enjoy your joys.
Can you explain to everybody about the Gearing Up for Hunger? I know a lot of people in the community may not know what it is or know what to expect when people come to their door.
So normally, we donate things like canned goods. And last year, we actually challenged the people, the students at Warren Central to try to fill up a full bus with canned goods and toiletries so that we could donate it. However, this year, we are looking to do things a little bit differently, but we're not exactly sure what we're going to, what we're wanting to do, but we will be letting everyone know soon.
Okay, what I was getting at, and I'll just say, when my kids, when they would go with clubs and things like that, they would go trick-or-treating for canned goods. Also, so there's a lot of our clubs and teams that go through the neighborhood just trick-or-treating for the canned goods to fill up the bus or whatever it is. So just want to make sure that our community knows that's happening.
Okay, well, that'll be good. Hey, I, okay, well, we don't, I don't see, let me make sure I don't, I get this right because Brendan's not here. So anyway, our mayor, neighborhood advocate is not here today. So what we'll do is move on to board correspondence, and then do we have any?
We do not.
Okay, good, good. What about green cards?
We do not.
Any green cards? Okay, well, I'll tell you what. Let's move on to our consent agenda. And it includes approval of minutes, financial report payroll claims, financial report claim register and electronic payments, financial report year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resource report, supplemental personnel report, field trip requests, permission to accept gifts and grants, change reports, contracts, and use of school property. Could I get someone to move to accept, make a motion on that?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's move to the vote. The motion carries. It's approved. Next item on the agenda are reports. Our first item on, the first report will be with from Kent Schroeder for annual technology report.
President Dorsey, President King, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, thank you for allowing the Technology Department to give you an update. I'd like to ask Justin Osborne to come up here if he could. As he's coming up here, you know, the board goals, we always want to invest in efficiencies, and we're always focused on what the students' needs are, right? So there's some obvious ones that revolve around devices, but network and keeping their information secure, making sure teachers can get online to do what they need as well, and that our families have everything they need. So leading, to be on camera, you're going to have to come over here. So leading the team, and many of you know Josh, who is in charge of the infrastructure team, and Justin, who manages all of our support. But there's some other people here tonight that we'd like to recognize. I always joke with Dr. Hanson that a good technology department are like referees. When things are going well, you just don't notice them. When things don't go well, that's when, you know, people take it out on us, even though we don't throw flags for pass interference in the end zone. So who these people are, so our frontline folks, Cherie Owens, who's here, Kiefer Plunkett, our help desk staff, and Linda Johnson, who is also here. She's our technology specialist. So we've got a lot more. Ivan Cardenas is here. Ivan, you want to stand up? You can see the schools that they support here. Jason Black is not here. Joe is not here. Kyle is not here. Mike Holcraft, Mike is here. If you could stand up, Mike. Richard is our newest school tech. He's not here. Your favorite monthly school tech, Tim Fallowell, who you all know very well. Finally, our mobile device manager, Wyn Jones, who is making sure that all the iPads and Chromebooks are working properly. So what do they do, right? So the help desk, that's pretty obvious. But they do some things that you may not know. They do remote support, not only for our staff, but our families. They get a lot of calls from parents who are struggling with ParentView or Parents Square or just getting their students logged into their iPad or their Chromebook. Technology specialist Linda, she does all of our purchasing. So every single item that we purchase goes through her. She works closely with the business office. She also runs our technology Twitter account. So if you follow that, you can thank Linda for all of those twice-a-week updates from us. Wyn, as I mentioned, our mobile device manager, so he does all the iPad and Mac specialization. He does the repairs and management. JAMP is our tool that we manage the iPads with and also does Google Admin Administration and Management for our accounts and the Chromebooks. So these, these people, they're really the unsung heroes of our department and really the district, right? Because they, a lot of times, they're just taking care of things in the background, and people don't notice it. So what are those school techs doing, right? They're doing in-person technology support for all of the K-12 buildings, this building, Porter, Early Childhood, MCRC, Adult Ed as well. So we, they do inventory management for about 25,000 pieces of hardware in the district. They do hardware and software support for all of these items. And we also run an in-person help desk at the Resource Center on the back side, the north side of the building for mostly WA families, but really anybody can show up there. We also have a daily Chrome Desk at the high school. Periods one and two, it's open daily. At the beginning of the school year, it's open longer. So this gives you an idea of just on the school tech side, how many people they're supporting every day. So they have multiple schools. Kyle is, well, Kyle, you could say, we have one school tech for the freshman academy, high school, and career center. So Kyle runs that help desk, Chrome Desk, in the morning and then supports all the staff in that building and all the devices. So these are, these are big numbers, right? So almost 14,000 users between them. Not a lot of devices, right? K-4, 4200 student devices, almost 3,500 in the intermediate middle schools, the high school, 4,000 or so. And then there's an additional over 12,000. It's just all the ancillary things that you see, screens and Apple TVs and projectors. It goes on and on, hotspots. So I'm going to bring Justin in here. So what happens before and after school? Like, the busiest time of the year for us is July and August for obvious reasons. So we collect all of the devices at the end of the year and get them all ready again for the next year. And that includes in the K-8 area, moving them based on the roster from their old room to their new room. So first grader iPads go to their second grade classroom, which could be any number of classrooms. And all this happens in eight days roughly before school starts, all of that movement. So 6,800 devices moved in eight days. And there is generally, that's when we see a little bit of overtime because these guys are determined to get the job done well. And then 38, you want to explain the additional devices for K-12?
Yeah, absolutely. So the 3,875 additional devices touched during the beginning of the school. So when we deploy our devices in K-8 and do our registration day at the high school for nine through 12 before school starts, we have an incredibly transient population at school, especially those first few weeks. And it's an enormous lift on the technicians to keep track of the comings and goings of those assets, making sure that we're not only retaining the assets of students who leave the district, move out, transfer to another school, but also making sure that the new students who are coming in at the same time get those devices. So during the first two weeks of school, we touch an additional 3,875 devices this past year. It varies from year to year. It won't get lower than that, you know. It's an incredibly big lift, and these guys do an incredible job at handling that lift.
Yeah, the other thing that happens right before the eight days is they spend, well, parts of three days handing out devices at the high school, right? So, and that's split shifts. We have, you know, afternoon and evening sessions, so they're giving up their evenings to do that as well. So it's a busy time for them. So how many tickets do we get? This is a big number, right? We had over 17,000 last year, last school year. We've had a whole bunch this year. We're tracking a little lower this year, which is great. What this boils down to is like these techs are doing about, as a group, they're closing about 100 tickets a day. as a group, they're closing about 100 tickets a day. So at the beginning of the year, when they're closing 100, there's 150 that get opened that day. So it takes a while to dig out. But they, you know, again, they'll work overtime. They'll come in on weekends to get a lot of that work done as well. So we, since we didn't, we no longer send the iPads home in 5.8, we're seeing fewer tickets for those devices. We still get tickets for lost iPads, but they're just somewhere else in the building. So as long as they're plugged in, we're able to ping them and return them to where they are supposed to be. So yeah, we've had, you know, these are big numbers, as you can see. So I'm going to ask Justin to talk about something new this year is our service level agreements. So there's a couple of slides here that I will show as well.
So service level agreements are really an industry standard anywhere you go for technology departments. At their root, they're a promise that we will service some general issue broken out into some specifics in a certain amount of time. So we say that for tickets that arrive at the help desk for Cherie and Kiefer, that they're going to get a response from somebody with less than eight hours. And if it never reaches a tech, that we'll solve that issue remotely in less than two days. Now, if a student actually, or if that ticket actually gets to a tech and it's a general problem, you know, somebody having a software problem on their laptop or needing help with a projector or their TV perhaps, we say that a technician can get out to them in less than two days for a response. And then we promise them that within four workdays, we can resolve your issue. Now, for new student device deployments, those timelines don't work. Students need their devices quicker than that. And so the service level agreement that we've spoken to the buildings and are pretty good at keeping up on is that a student will have a device in their hands in K through 12 in less than two days. We have a couple different other SLAs as well for internal processes to make sure we stay on top of things in a timely manner, things like making sure all of our security cameras are working, repairing a certain amount of Chromebooks on a quota per week to make sure that the high school's damage doesn't outpace our repair process, so they have an appropriate amount of devices to use, as well as testing loaner device checks that we do every time, one week ahead of a round of testing that occurs to make sure that students who don't have a working device when PSAT starts are able to lean on those cart of devices that we provide to them year round. And here's a couple of just graphs on it, from the beginning of the year of kind of how we do on them. So you can see most of these are trending really high. And the new student iPad request SLA is about 50%. And our next slide will explain that. And it's because in July and August, when our population is so transient, the number is too great. And we really struggle with the amount of requests that we get of students coming in and out alongside of all the other general requests that we get for new staff, broken equipment. Kids still break their iPads the first day of school. That, you know, that first two months of school, we're not really hitting those two days. Generally, it's more like three or four at that time because it's still one of our biggest priorities to be able to get those devices. And then once thing, once that time slopes down and that population kind of settles down, you can see we trend sharply upward in us being able to achieve this SLA. You know, their general response ticket goes up to almost 100% for their resolution and response. And about 71% of the tickets that we receive, they receive it in two days or less.
Thank you, Justin. You know, we've tried to make this better, like when a new student enrolls, we generate the ticket automatically for the tech so that the schools don't have to do it. One thing we're working on this year is Synergy's not really able to give us a clean look at transfer students within the district. So we're going to have to make some tweaks in there so that we can speed that up. So sometimes, in the past, that was a problem. The teacher gets busy and maybe doesn't open the ticket the day the student arrives. So if they don't, we don't know about it. So we've, we fixed that issue and we're constantly looking. You know, a couple of other things that Justin has done. One is at the, after a ticket is closed, they'll get, the user will get some questions like, how did, you know, how did we do and some other questions like that. So, and then recently, Justin sent out a survey to all staff, four different categories. So we're combing through those responses right now. There's some good ideas in there. There's some pass interference in the end zone comments in there too that we'll have to follow up on. But those, those help desk ticket responses, Justin has gone a step farther. So every month, he has a GOAT award, the greatest of all time, right? Based on which school tech has done the best job that month. And then there's an annual award. So this past year, our annual award winner was Tim Followwell. So he was the goat, the Golden Goat Award winner for the year. You can see the, he's proudly showing the golden goat around his neck there. So.
It doesn't look like it, no.
Yeah, I mean, he didn't wear it?
Yeah, Tim, Tim's a, he's a tall person. He needs a longer chain. As you can tell, it's pretty snug around his neck, so. But I would like for my staff that's here to just come up and again, get a round of applause if we could. Now come on up. So to be on camera, you have to walk through here. And then if, can you switch the camera so it shows the board? So Tim is able to do two things at once. Is there, are there any questions that I could answer about?
I have one. I went on my phone to Twitter to find your call name or whatever it's called, you know? And I looked up Warren Township Technology, hoping something would pop up, but it didn't. So what do I look up to follow?
Yeah, I think it's MSD Warren Tech. Is that what it is? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I got a, I got a question for you. Yeah, I don't know. I was, as you were talking and I'm hearing resources and I'm hearing equipment and all of that. And I was just wondering, hotspots, calculators, iPads, desktops, Chromebooks, are all of those in your purview? Or just maybe?
No, they are, yes.
How do you keep track of all that stuff?
Yeah, so we have an inventory management system. All those items are asset tagged, so they have a barcode and a number that's associated with it. And it's critical that our staff, the technology staff, when things move, they have to track and say, this is being moved from here or it's being sent out for repair, let's say. Or we're switching a student from one device to another. They check in the old one and check out the new one to that student.
Let me ask you about security then. Pilfering and students that maybe will go to another school and take their computer with them. I don't know. What else? Just theft, you know, that's pilfering. Ones that break that maybe they don't tell you that has broken and kind of like just keep it on the low, down low. Now, maybe you guys won't think about it. How do you, how do you do all of that? I mean, what about pilfering? How do you keep that from happening with, when they, when you take them home, for example, and they don't bring them back?
Well, that's a good question. We, we don't know that they're lost or stolen unless someone tells us. Well, that's one of the reasons we collect all the devices at the end of the year, so we can find out what we have and what we don't. And that gives us really about six weeks to adjust if we're down a lot of devices that we expected to have returned that we then need to get prepared for the next school year. It's.
I'm going to give you one more softball.
Okay, those are softballs, okay.
When a kid leaves during the middle of the year, withdraws.
Yes. So if, so we.
How do you get your computer back?
Right. So typically, if we know, if the school knows that the student is leaving, well, first off, K-8, they don't take them home now except for eLearning. So that's not as big an issue as it used to be. So at the high school, we ask the high school, when, when they withdraw, collect that. Just like when we have an employee leave, collect their badge, collect their laptop. And, but that doesn't always happen. But it's not necessarily the high school's fault because sometimes they don't know the student has enrolled somewhere else for weeks. So by that point, it's very difficult for us to get that device back. So we do a couple of things. We lock it so it's no longer available to be used and we'll send an invoice. Now, we send it to the last known address, but sometimes that bounces back. It's, it's not a perfect science. We do have, we get calls from pawn shops. We get calls from eBay customers. And we, we get some back that way. But yeah, there is some loss, some shrink every year with just students leaving and us not able to retain that device.
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
One more, one more. And you probably already covered this and I probably just forgot. But periodic maintenance or maintenance on your, on your equipment? Is that on an ongoing basis? Or do you have periods of time set up for like maintenance checks or scheduled maintenance on particular types of equipment?
Yeah, it's around the breaks. So we'll go through, say at fall break, and we'll do an inventory and do some checks, yeah. So, you know, what, what we used to, and we've discovered today that it, I won't say which schools, but there's a couple of schools where we have carts.
Which schools? You got to tell us, you got to tell us.
Well, I'll tell you why I'm not going to say it. Because we've discovered that the students can reach in through the front of the cart into the back and unplug the iPad cord. So you can imagine how valuable those iPad cords are. So we were brainstorming today about how to fix that little issue in these carts. So I don't want to advertise where they are because I don't want people to know where those carts, all the other buildings, that's not possible.
Kids are smart and they have you running around in circles with your hair on fire trying to figure them out.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay.
I just want to say I appreciate you guys and you're doing an awesome job. Thank you.
They are. Thank you. Let the handshaking begin.
Yes, we want the handshake.
Great presentation. We want to say great presentation. Good presentation. Okay. Wow, that was good. Great presentation. Very good presentation. A lot of good information. And man, you guys got a busy job. You really do. Really challenging job. Well, next on the item on the agenda is attendance update, first quarter review, Allison Woods.
Okay, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I'm here to talk with you about our progress so far in attendance and some data around that. Oops. Oh, shoot. Like I haven't presented before. Okay. So again, our attendance initiative supports our board goals of investing in the future of our graduates, around student achievement, and also meeting the needs of the whole child with safety and security when they're at school. We know they're getting fed, they're learning, and in a safe environment. Strategic plan focus areas, also investing in the future of our graduates, meeting the needs of the whole child and investing in people. So I'm going to show you a lot of data tonight. And I want to put a disclaimer. I did not sit down at one moment in time and make the whole board presentation. So the data sources that I really use are Five Lab, which is pulling from Synergy, and Rowi, which are both dynamic. So every day, when there are new absences, there are new presents, that, those attendance percentages change a little bit. Also, Rowi looks at our students that are currently enrolled in Warren. So when I'm pulling data from Rowi, it's kids that are here right now. When we're looking at Synergy and Five Lab, it's kids that have been here at any point during the year. So if they were here for three weeks in August and have left, that present and absence is included in our overall attendance data. So as I'm going through data here, you're going to see a little bit of difference. One point, one time it's going to be 93.4 and then it's going to be 93.2. I want to assure you that all this data is accurate. It just depends on the day that I am pulling it from. So here's some overall attendance data looking back really four years. Right now, our attendance rate is 93.02%, which here's the first thing you can see. That ADA percentage on the right shows a 93.64, the difference between our Rowi and our Synergy and the day that that was polled. Overall, we have an increase from August. Looking from August to September, we have an increase of attendance from the end of, end of August to end of September. I put in there the history, going back to 2020, 21 school year, when our overall year-end attendance rate was 76%. So we're headed in the right direction and hoping to see that today, still this year, things are looking good. Now, with that being said, we still have a lot of absences. We have over 37,000 days of missed attendance this school year so far from our students, which equates to over 7 million minutes of missed instruction time. So when you have people asking you about our letters and why we're still talking about attendance or about why, you know, this is important or, you know, schools are reaching out, it's because here we are in October and we have this many absences still on the books. Although things are looking better and we're going in the right direction, we still have kids missing school. Our highest days of absence for the district are Friday and Tuesday. And a good news is that our chronic percentage, which I'll talk about a little bit later, is reduced as compared to the previous month as well. So attendance by school. Here is where all of our schools, really at the beginning of October, were sitting at attendance rate wise. A highlight for both Stony Brook, Renaissance, and Lakeside, who all increased in attendance from August to September. Stony Brook had a pretty substantial increase. Our top five schools for attendance rate, Pleasant Run, Eastridge, Lakeside, Brookview, and Sunny Heights. For the 5.8 level, Stony Brook was our highest 5.8 building attendance wise. And then our highest grade levels are third, fourth, followed by fifth grade, which when we're talking about I read, I learn, those assessment grades, it is great to see that those are our highest years of attendance so far in the school year. So this is year over year. So that blue line there is that goal that Rowi sets with 97.5. That's our target that we want to be at or above. And you can see in July, for those two days, I think, we were there. We've, we have gone down, but that gold bar is what it looked like last year. And so orange, you can see for August, September, and October, we are trending higher than we were at this time last school year, which is, which is great. Now, this is a very tiny, both this one and the next slide are really tiny. So hopefully you can see this close up on yours. This is by grade level, so kindergarten through 12th grade. And it has all four years. It has that, that purple is the 2021 school year. Over to the right, the red is this school year, 2324. And you can see again, all grade levels are trending in the right direction with increased attendance over the past three years. attendance over the past three years. We see the same thing at all of our school buildings. Brookview's on the left, Warren Island Academy's on the right. And you can see that purple bar and that orange bar, the twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two school year are those years that at that middle level, so you you see that Raymond Park, Renaissance, Stony Brook, that we had the hybrid, we had kids coming in every other day. Instruction looked a little bit differently. So you can definitely see the biggest growth in those areas. As opposed to in the elementary, you don't see a substantial because for the most part, our students were here in person every day. So what do we do when students are not attending, which this is not new? I've shown this at a few different board meetings. But we have a lot of different intervention steps that happen. We have letters that go out and it starts with a teacher phone call that's not captured in some of the data I'm going to show you next, it's just checking in, or is everything okay, we miss you, I miss you in class. Letters to families that indicate when they, you know, the five day and the ten and the fifteen, or you've missed a week of school, you've missed two weeks of school, you've missed three weeks of school. Parent phone calls, so that looks a little bit different in every building. Sometimes it's our family engagement liaison checking in, how's everything going? Do you need any resources, counselors, admin? We have family conferences, we have attendance contracts. And then as we go through and it gets more significant, those family conferences maybe come home visits if we're having trouble with the families coming in for meetings and eventually miss getting to that tier three referral, which I believe last I looked, we have about thirteen students who have already reached that tier three referral this year by either having thirty-six or more absences or students who were chronically absent last year who have already gotten to ten absences this year. This average speed is how quickly it takes us to respond. So one of the things we've really been paying attention to this year is that if a student, for example, misses five days and they need to receive a letter and it takes us ten days to get that letter out to them, well, they could miss an additional three or four days in between there. So it is really important that we're being timely when we're reaching out to families, when we're seeing what support they need and letting them know the importance of coming to school, that we're doing that quickly. And so as a district, our average speed is a day. Some of, we we get stuck a little bit on some of the family conferences, phone calls, things that take a little bit longer, especially to connect with families. But overall, we're happy with that that speed. So here's what we've done so far with interventions. Letters, emails, text messages, we have had over three thousand of all of those go out this school year. The parent-student contacts are not that three-day phone call, but the later phone calls, the family conferences, home visits. And then the awards, one thing that's really cool about Rowi is that it tracks as students have increased attendance. So if they've missed two two days in a month, if the next month they have improved attendance and don't miss, they notify them, hey, your student, your child's attendance is improving, great job, keep it up. And so those are automated and acknowledging improved attendance without some of the additional lift of the schools, in addition to what the schools are doing with acknowledging attendance as well. So our folks are working really hard and doing a lot of things. So where are we by attendance by tier? So this is a breakdown of where our overall student population falls. So if you can see this blue section here, are students that really are here almost all the time and maybe missed a day of school. So we're at almost five thousand students who are nearly at perfect attendance at this time in the school year. That green section with another four thousand there is ninety-five or higher, which obviously I did my math poorly here because that really should be more like eight thousand. I, so I'll correct that and update that. So I was adding these two numbers together. So as you can see, we really have with ninety-five percent or higher, anybody can do math really quick, four, eight, about eight thousand students. So that's a great, when we're looking at, you know, our student population of about eleven thousand five hundred, we have a lot of kids that are here and attending school and having great attendance. We have this percentage, this twenty-five hundred that are at risk, that are really on track to, you know, miss ten days or more of school in the school year and then are chronic and severely chronic students. The top five barriers, so as we're making those phone calls, having those meetings, those letters, we're identifying, why is your child not in school? What is the barrier to engagement? Of course, health, there's, kids are sick, the flu's going around, COVID's going around. There are still kids that are going to be sick from school. Caregiving is one of our top things where they don't have, they have to either take care of siblings, a parent has to go to work and doesn't have childcare after school. So maybe they're bringing them, you know, bringing them along. Transportation, they can't get to or from school. And then mental health, that's impacting their attendance in school. So looking at our chronic absenteeism, so we really want to be at ten percent or below, which is that dark blue line there in the middle. That light pink line at the top is where we were last year for our chronic absenteeism and this light blue is where we are now. So you can see really in September of last year, we had thirty-eight percent of our students that were chronically absent. As as of right now, we're about seventeen percent. So why we want to see that continue to decrease, we are at a much better place this year than we were last year. And you remember last year was our big first push with attendance with rolling out Rowi, with tracking students who were, you know, absent and and doing a better job of taking attendance, so we have a more accurate attendance data. So what do we do proactively? Since we had Rowi last year and the lessons we learned last year, we really were intentional about making sure that we reached out to families that of students that were chronically absent last school year. So in July, families that had students that were chronically absent received a letter from MCRC offering support, you know, letting letting them know the importance of being in attendance, why school is important. Family engagement liaisons also called those families, making sure that we, they knew the first day of school, that we were excited to have them back, what support do they need? And where they were connected with a an attendance mentor, an adult who is checking in on those kiddos and noticing when they're absent. So a higher level of support and engagement really focused around attendance for students that we knew struggled last school year. They're also on a more intensive intervention plan. So as I mentioned, we have thirteen students that are in tier three referrals. That tier three where it gets to ESPA with James Taylor and the ESPA team is for our tier three students, we're not waiting until they miss another thirty-six days. We know that they already missed thirty-six or more last year. So when they miss ten, they're being referred and we're giving them interventions earlier in the school year to help try to get them back on track and back in school. So moving in the right direction, we still have a lot of work to do. I think attendance is going to be something that's always going to, we're going to be striving for to increase because people are always going to be sick. But getting people back in the mindset of post-COVID of it's important to be here each and every day, so you can learn. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
I'd just like to say you're doing an amazing job. You guys are doing a great job on that. It's kind of depressing that we still have thirty-seven thousand absences, you know, but we have a lot of kids too, so.
Yes, yes, and it's a team effort. The, you know, our buildings are working hard communicating that message and supporting. I know I've talked about our attendance team that meets every week to talk about, you know, the data side of things and and what we're doing. So everybody has to be talking about it to make it important.
You can actually see that everybody is working hard on it because every school has increased, you know, so.
I noticed your interventions, I want to go back to that. You got letters and emails and and texts and all of that.
This one?
Are they, are they, are they? How do I say this? Are any of these repeats, like for example, you got to, you send someone a letter, do they also get a text or do they also get a email and is that number?
Yes, some of those are duplicates, yes. We're trying to reach families in any way that we can. So a lot of those letters are sent to families in emails and in texts, hoping that they open one of those. So yes, I apologize, I should have explained that.
Well, it looks like so, I mean, i- if they weren't duplicates, we're talking about nine, nine thousand interventions during, I guess, this period. And I don't know, I don't know, I guess, I guess you're really reaching them and getting, you're you're doing, of course, you're doing a better job of other than we have in the past because we never did send this much interventions out or, I'm pretty sure. But I was just, you're just a little curious about whether that was, how effective is that? I mean, it's getting us ninety-three percent, a lot of folks, that's the average right now and we're trying to get to ninety-seven. Just wondering what it would take to to really get to that higher level.
Yeah, yes, a lot of those are duplicates. Not all of those are open, which is why we send it in so many ways. So we send the text messages, we send the letters, we make the phone calls. You know, not everybody opens their email or opens that text message. And so it's trying to engage in different ways. So if we have a family that's not looking at that text message, then they're, you know, getting that phone call. Rowi has really made this process so much easier. Sending a letter for an administrator, I can send out, you know, forty emails, letters, text messages in one minute. I can go and click and do a quick view and they go out really automatically, which is huge, that that was a barrier before to have to do those all individually. Families that don't have emails, we can print those letters out and send them. But we also get notifications if a parent hasn't opened a letter, if they haven't opened that email, the person who sends it is notified so they know, hey, like I sent this and this parent hasn't engaged, I need to follow up in a different way. So Rowi has been a really powerful tool to help us make steps in the right direction.
These awards, are these like perfect attendance sort of awards or what is that kind of?
No, they're improved. So if a student has missed, like, so if I missed two days in August and then I had, I didn't miss any days in September, then that's where I would get that notification of, hey, like you're you're going in the right direction with attendance. Our schools are also doing things, they're acknowledging perfect attendance, acknowledging improved attendance, acknowledging attendance at ninety-seven percent. So different ways to, they're having lots of attendance competitions. I think when you guys do our board visit at Pleasant Run, sneak peek on that is I think we're going to be welcoming car riders and students coming into school, acknowledging that we're happy to see them at school. So I know Pleasant Run has lots of cool things they're doing with different mascots and we have a, we have lots of schools being really creative on what they can do with acknowledging students for being there.
I think you guys are doing a great job, I really do. There's no question in my mind that if we don't pay attention to attendance, then, you know, you're actually, you know, kids are missing out on their education. If they're sitting at home watching TV or they're faking being sick and they're at home, then they're not in school learning and getting themselves squared away. So I think that's, that's why I think it's important that we we pay a lot of attention to this because if we've got folks not in school, then they're not learning. And so and so why are we doing this then? If we don't pay attention to that that particular tenant?
Yep, I agree.
Thanks, good job.
Great, thanks.
I just want to say I'm so happy that we did invest in the Rowi, you know, because every little bit helps. And because once upon a time, they were taking parents to court, are they still doing that?
So Indiana, or at least Marion County, does not do that so much anymore. We have worked with building this system. James Taylor has worked really closely with DCS to let them know what our process is. And Peggy Serby has great relationships with James and folks over at MCRC. So when students reach that tier three attendance and have to go over to ESPA for support with attendance, if parents don't engage in that, we do do a DCS referral. And because of that relationship with them, they are taking and accepting those referrals rather than screening them out, which I'll be honest, a lot of our families that went to ESPA last year, almost all of them, we had to do a DCS referral on because the families didn't come to the ESPA meeting and, you know, there's bigger issues in the home that are, you know, preventing students from getting to school oftentimes, other than them just not wanting to come. So DCS is involved with those students and helping them and their families become engaged with attending school. So although they're not taking them to court, we are getting them involved and being held accountable in addition to, you know, outside of what we can control at school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Allison, I would just like to say that great job. And today, Warren hosted DCS and five hundred staff members and the assistant director was also there at the PAC Center and Dr. Janetti. And Warren is trailblazing in attendance and relearning attendance and nationwide. Dr. Janetti gave us high reviews on what we're doing with attendance. So keep up the great work and you're right with the relationships with DCS and those partnerships that just help strengthen the families and help meet those needs so we can get the babies back in attendance. So it was a great investment, Ms. Gloria, and it is being recognized, so.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate that presentation. Next on the agenda is college and career readiness update, Doug?
Good evening, President Dorsey and Dr. Hanson and members of the board. I'm always excited to come and provide you with an update on our work around the vision of a journey to graduate and as we intentionally build a college and career readiness framework. And so first of all, I'd like to start by thanking all of you for your support and your participation in our Invision Day. Tonight, I'm going to just share some activities really since Invision Day, since most of you participated in that. And we'll have a little bit about a preview for Invision Day two that's coming up on November eighth, as Dr. Hanson mentioned. So the first thing that happened right after Invision Day was another opportunity provided by the CISC to provide professional development that was also a part of the Forward NGL model. And if you remember, the last month, I shared with you about a K to eight study conference that allowed us to take some elementary principals and middle school principals and staff members to participate in that. This was a freshman seminar training that was provided. So we were able to take a group of high school staff members to this training seminar. And this was the first of four days that will be provided strictly to build what is called a freshman seminar class for us. We haven't really determined what the name specifically would be, but it, right now, it functions as our preparing for college and careers course. And so the, what's the purpose of of this in in the building the course is to not only provide a guaranteed college career readiness experience for all of our freshmen, but it also lays the foundation for other experiences in grades ten through twelve. And so it's really a key piece to this Forward NGL model, along with building a freshman academy. And so it's that freshman seminar class that all freshmen would take. And so again, this was an opportunity to start having discussion to and have discussion about building this course and what it would consist of. And so there's really five kind of aspects of this course that we really started to work towards. And again, this is going to be over a four-day period, so we weren't able to complete all of these. But the main, the main aspects of the of the course will be, one, to build relationships, build community. One of the things that we recognize is it's one of our whys for why we want to do this model and follow the Forward NGL model, is it provides us with a way to make our high school smaller and to build community and to create these smaller learning communities. And so the first step in this course will be to help build those relationships. And those relationships are student to student, it's student to staff, and then it's also a recognition for yourself as a student, you know, your strengths, your interests and things like that. A second thing A second thing that will be an aspect of this course is providing the support and structures around transitions. As we all know, those transitions are so important. So as the student transitions into the high school from eighth grade, it's things like, you know, introducing them to all that's offered at the high school, and how to be successful at the high school, and things like that. But it's also then the transition after their freshman year going on to grades ten then through twelve. And so, it's about building those transitions for them. The third thing then, as I have already mentioned, is offering college and career experiences for the students. So that could be, you know, college visits, it could be guest speakers, it could be industry tours, things like that. The fourth thing is to intentionally embed journey of a graduate or and/or employability skills within the curriculum, so that we're being intentional to teach those and assess those. And then lastly, it's strategically developing a timeline and a sequence for these experiences and for the course, so that they build upon one another. So, for example, if we're gonna provide a career fair as a part of one of their experiences, what are we doing prior to that career fair, so that our students are prepared to ask employers questions and things like that? So that was what the team, there's a picture of the team from the high school we participated in. And so it was a very productive day. And we look forward to our next opportunity to work on this, which will come up in November, right before Thanksgiving. As Dr. Hanson mentioned, we had another opportunity to take a team to Nashville. If you recall, last year, we took a team to Akron, Ohio in the fall. And then we took another team, a different team, to the academies of Nashville in the spring. And so we had the opportunity to take another team just last week. And so, you can see the picture here, we, this is our largest group so far. So we were able to have thirteen individuals go and just, again, learn about the academies of Nashville, to learn about the model and things like that. And so, just a little bit about what we experienced during our trip. And so, the first day, and this is very similar to what we experienced last year, but day one was an opportunity to work with the other Indiana districts that are a part of the three E grant. And if, again, if you recall, there's six other districts that received the grant along with us. And so we had a pre-session. And so there was some more training, some more information provided, because, again, we brought with us, just like the other Indiana districts, new members to this who may not have had as much background in what this model entails. And so some of it was just kind of providing that information. We had the opportunity to provide part of the presentation on that day, and so it went very well. Probably the most important thing, though, was that the, kind of a tail end of that afternoon, we had the opportunity as a group to really consider what questions did we have going into the next two days? Because I think that was really important for us. We've now, again, this is our third visit. We spent over a year now learning about the model. And so our questions now are a little bit more specific, and we have more knowledge now. And so we are looking for things more specifically than perhaps we did last year. And so it was great, really, to have the team kind of consider what questions are out there, and so that we are ready to then ask those questions during day two, and then obviously in day three, when we visited the schools. So then day two was a day just really of breakout sessions, workshops, and so it was, they broke us into role-alike groups. So, for example, folks that were district leaders had their own sessions. If I was a counselor or a teacher, they broke the day down into that. They also then had topic sessions. And so our team was free to kind of choose those topics that kind of related best to them. And so it was a full day. And then as a team, we had the opportunity to kind of debrief that day. And so one of the questions I asked each of our members was, you know, were one of your questions that you had the day before, was it answered? And if so, do you have a follow-up question, or do you have an additional question? And so, again, that was very instructive. And then day three was spent visiting schools. And so we had the opportunity to visit two schools. And again, keep in mind that Nashville, this is just a high school model, which is different than what we're pursuing. We're pursuing a K to twelve approach here, but Nashville is just a high school approach. So it was two high schools that we got to visit. And so, again, that was a great opportunity to hear from the practitioners. Keep in mind that Nashville Public Schools has been following this model, implementing this model now. This is their seventeenth year. And what was refreshing was their honesty. And they just, you know, they were very realistic about some of their own struggles, as well as emphasizing to us, it's taken time, and it's gonna take time for us to do this as well. So I wanted to kind of highlight some of those questions that were answered for us as a group, and then some of our main takeaways. And so I've just kind of highlighted just a few. There were, of course, more than this. But the first kind of question that I thought was really important, and it was actually from our CFO, Matt Parkinson, was, does the Forward NGL model work? And is there data to support it? Which is a very good question to ask. And so, one of the things that we, it was answered for all of us, was they provided some data on their graduation rate, their attendance rate, their suspension rate, their industry certifications and dual credit. And so, I'll just highlight just the graduation rate. The year before they implemented this model, Nashville Public Schools had about a fifty-eight percent graduation rate. And they were highlighted as what they called a dropout factory. So just a couple of years ago, their latest data that they were able to share, their graduation rate's now up to eighty-two percent. And so that's, you know, quite a difference in terms of what they were dealing with. And so, that's a victory for them, and they credit that to this model. A second one I like to highlight is the industry certifications. And so, before the model was implemented, they had zero industry certifications being earned by students. And again, just last year, they had over three thousand industry certifications being earned. And so, to them, again, that's some proof that this is working for them. And so, that was great to hear. A second question that has been brought up, really from last year, and this is one of my personal questions of the model, is what does it really mean to teach through a career lens? Because, again, part of this model is that core content teachers, meaning the math, the soul studies, the science, English teacher, if I'm placed on an academy, and it's, let's say it's the Academy of Business, then I'm teaching my content through that business theme. And so I had some questions, and I know other members of the team had some questions. I believe Rachel was one who had questions about this concept. And so, again, we had, there was a breakout session specifically on this. And so I feel, and I know our team felt much better after hearing that information. And so, in real short terms, they emphasize that it's not changing what you're teaching. Teachers still have to teach standards, they still have to do those things, but it's how you teach the content. And so, it's trying to make those connections with your content to, again, the broader learning. And so, as we all know, the content can be what you need to know in that specific discipline. The concepts are really what, how we want our students to make those connections. And then the skills are what we want them to be able to do, and it goes beyond then that specific discipline. So it's making those connections for the students with that theme, so that it makes it more relevant for the students, and it helps them be motivated to learn that particular subject. And so, we felt like those were kind of answered there. A third question that I'll share with you is really kind of, what are the realities of implementing this model? Because, again, you know, we have to have a healthy sense of some skepticism when they say things like, all of our students are doing this, and, you know, everything is roses, right? And so we know that there's gonna be some questions we needed to ask specifically about this. And so, I'll just bring out a couple of ones that we feel like we got some good answers. The first one is about this concept of purity, meaning that if you create these academies, students are only taking classes within that academy. And so, that raises questions about things like, if we offer an AP class, are we able to do that in that kind of model? What about if that AP teacher's only residing on that one academy? What does that mean for the students who are not a part of that academy? And so, so the answers we got were that, no, that it's not completely pure, and that they create what's called global classes. And so, if, I'll just use this as an example, if they only have one section of AP Calculus, and that teacher happens to be on one academy, he's still gonna be, or she's still gonna be able to teach that class, but they'll be teaching students from all of the different academies as well. So the students would not necessarily take all of their classes through one academy, but if need be, would travel to the other academies to take a certain class. And so, that was, that was good to hear, that they did allow that. A second thing that's kind of related to that is, as we know, when we start to make determinations about what pathways that we want to offer at Warren Central, we'll have to have some kind of way to make those determinations. And so, the way to do that is, we have to look at the data. And so we've got to look at local and regional workforce economic data. And so, that will help us make some determinations. But we also know that that could cause some challenges, because the economic data could be saying one thing, but then student interest or teacher, you know, licensing may say another thing. So I know Dr. Hanson mentioned this at the very beginning. We just visited the Vincennes Aviation Program out at the airport. Fantastic program. The data says that there is a huge need for aircraft mechanics, and it's a high-wage, high-demand type of industry. Well, we don't know, we could create a pathway for that at Warren Central, but we, right now, no pun intended, we'd be flying blind a little bit, because we don't know how many students would be interested in that. Now, again, some of that can, over time, would be helped by us providing more career exploration and information about different careers, like in the airline industry. But right now, it may be difficult to have student interest in a field like that. On the converse side, we could bring up something like cosmetology, which is not a high-wage, not a high necessarily demand field, if we look just strictly at that economic data, but that's a high student interest. And so, our question was, do you purely go with the data, or do you try to have a balance? And so the answer was, yes. There's, we have to have a balanced approach. You have to look at the data, but you also have to keep in mind student interest. You also have to keep in mind your teacher licensing and what, you know, their talents are as well. So that was, again, helpful to hear, that they do use a balanced approach, because, again, I would recommend that's the approach that we will have to take as well. And then, in terms of our main takeaways, again, I think our entire group would say, just like we heard last year as well, after we visited Akron and Nashville the first time, was that we have many components and many pockets of excellence already here. You know, one thing I said to a lot of our group, you know, when you go visit other school districts around the country, it just reminds you of how blessed we are here in Indiana, and how well our schools are funded and the facilities that we have. It's just, it's wonderful, because it's just not the case around the country. And so we have many components of this. And so that was, again, reassuring. I think some of us were like, you guys need to come and visit us, because we have some really great things already going on. The second thing is, we must make this our own. It's been helpful to go to Akron, it's been helpful to go to Nashville, but we have some great things already in place, and we just need to make this our own. We can't just go and copy something. There's no reason to go copy this. And I think Rachel said this, well, we need to adopt the good things that they have, but not everything, because not everything that they have is something that we would want to replicate. And so with that, what we need to do is, again, approach this with intentionality. We need to have, you know, a lot of work around alignment. And then we need to work on scaling, because we, again, we have some great things going on, but maybe only touching, you know, a small fraction of our students. So we need to scale this, so that all students can benefit from these kind of programs. And then lastly, the main takeaway, as I mentioned already, this is a process that will take time. It will not be done overnight. Lastly, I want to kind of share with you just a little bit of a preview of what to expect for Invision Day Two. Again, we felt like we had a very successful Invision Day One. Again, as you, because most of you were there, we had, you know, close to two hundred participants, and so that was just fantastic. And so, the purpose for Invision Day Two really is to finalize a vision statement. You know, right now, we have a draft vision statement or statements, and so it's to finalize a vision statement. The second thing is to recommit to an updated and an enhanced journey of a graduate concept. And so that involves, you know, determining those components. You know, we have the citizenship, collaboration, communication, those components. It's determining those. It's also then defining those. You know, one of the feedback that we hear is that some of our teachers don't know, what does that really mean? And how do I apply that at my, fill in the blank, my grade level? And so, our work will be to better define those. And then it's, the next step is determining focus areas, and then how to implement, you know, through implementation strategies within each component at and across those different grade levels. And so then after that has taken place, then after Invision Day Two, then our next steps will be to then begin to work on an updated and enhanced journey of a graduate visual to try to capture what has been decided, and then to begin preparations for the master planning or strategic planning process. So it's exciting. A lot of work is still to be done, but a lot of work has been done so far, and it's been a great process. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have for me.
I just wanted to say, the first page, I forgot to write down the title of it, but you were talking about the children and how you expose them to different things, you know, what day was that? I mean...
In terms of exposing them to...
Yeah, can you go back to when you first started, you know, about the day with the students?
Are you talking about the freshman seminar?
Yes.
Class?
Yes. With the freshman seminar training, did you guys touch on, you know, how to complete resumes? How to do, to enhance their speaking, you know, and also maybe mock interviews? And also their dress and appearance? Do you cover all of those things? Because many times, kids don't know how to do those things.
Yes, and so, definitely, those will be things that would be kind of follow under those college and career experiences. And so, again, we've partnered with Employee Indy, and so that is one of the things that, through their talent-bound continuum, they'll be able to also assist us. And so, they will be able to provide some employers to come in to do some mock interviews. And so part of, again, leading up to that, and that kind of goes to that fifth bullet that I put down here, was strategically develop in a timeline. So if we know that we're gonna have mock interviews coming up, what are we doing to prepare the students leading up to that? And then after that mock interview, getting some feedback, and then improving, so that when we have the actual career fair, and they are actually, you know, talking to employers, then they are ready to maybe provide a resume, that they'll be able to learn to look someone in the eye, shake their hand, and things like that. So yes, that'll be a part of some of the activities in this course.
That's what I was concerned about, and being able to speak fluently and be able to answer questions. You know, these are things that they need to practice on in real-life situations. And my second question is, you said... And my second question is, you said that some of the new programs that we're talking about doing, you know, like cosmetology is high, but some of the newer things, it's because if kids don't know, then they're not going to gravitate towards it. So basically, we need to expose them to the new things that we're talking about through guest speakers, through, you know, trying to let them know what the salary is going to be and how it's going to impact them in the future. And also you maybe field trips, you know, because people kids are afraid of the unknown. But once they're introduced, then they get excited about it. So we need to be excited so they can be excited and also excite their parents because parents is very important to try to involve them in that process.
Absolutely, and again, that's part of, you articulated that very well in that that is what we're trying to do in terms of this K to 12 intentional college career readiness framework so that we do a better job of all the way through, students are exploring their interests, they're also exploring what's possible out there. And we're already doing a little bit of that with Zello and they're able to get some of that through Zello. But then, as you mentioned, we're wanting to add things like guest speakers, industry tours, things like that, so that students are exposed to what else is out there. And so that then perhaps when they do get to the high school or ready to enter their sophomore year, now they say, well, maybe I would like to go into the aviation industry because now I'm really fired up about that. And so that that is part of what we're trying to do.
I have a quick question. Would this freshman seminar training class be in addition to the current freshman required class? Or would it be replace it?
So as I mentioned, it right now, it resides with our Preparing for College and Careers course. And so that right now is already a required course that we have all of our freshmen take. And so it won't be an additional requirement.
I want to say that is excellent, that we're starting off with ninth graders requiring this so that they can start thinking about what they want to do with their future. And then many times, children, they are excited about different things that they like. But we need to let children know what careers is going to support them in the future. You know, they might pick something that they're going to still be in poverty when they get out of school. But we need to point out to them, okay, you might like this, but let's look at the salary. Let's look at what you how the lifestyle you would like to live. Is that going to give you that lifestyle? So if it's not going to give you that lifestyle, now let's take a look at maybe something else that you might be interested in. So we need to sort of, you know, educate students and families and gear them in the right direction because our goal is for them not to get out of school and be in poverty, but to be successful and live successful lives.
That's right.
Well, let me let me just say that we're not only doing, and correct me if I'm wrong though, but we're not only starting at the eighth grade level, but we're also looking at middle school kids as it relates to the forward next generation learning, which requires the introduction of these sort of opportunities at the at the at the middle school, the middle school, middle school level, sixth grade, seventh grade, you know, on up. So so in addition, in addition to that, that eighth grade, we're even going even further back and starting looking at kids, introducing the kids to this in the sixth and seventh grade as well. So like, like, like us, we didn't, we didn't start realizing there was a world until like 11th grade. And then and then 12th grade shows up and they say, what do you want to do the rest of your life? You say, well, I only got, I'm going to graduate soon, I'm I'm done. Well, you're not done. As a matter of fact, you need to know something back in sixth grade. And so this is all, this is all good stuff, so.
Yeah, so in fact, we were actually starting, our intention is really to to build this at the elementary level. And so, yes.
Going back to.
It's a K to 12 approach.
To Akron, yeah, going back as far as the 11th grade, I mean, the elementary school level. Yeah, I think this is kind of great now we can, now it appears that we're partnering with not only the Nashville Academy, but what not only the forward next generation learning, but also Nashville Academy and their processes. So great presentation, great presentation.
I want to say one last thing, that Envision Day was great because I I thought it was great that we had parents, students. We just had everyone involved and that was great. I like the way you put that together. So I think that we're moving in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I just 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 had to say this, and I didn't, I didn't hear much about military careers, but but that's okay, that's okay, that's okay.
That's a part of it as well?
Yeah.
So was there a flexibility element in there? If you was changing, as we were talking about kids and from elementary to high school, that could be several visions.
Absolutely, and so that, again, that's another common question that I could have, you know, added to this list. And so the the answer is yes, they allow in this model and the way Nashville implements it and is that they allow students to change one time. So if a student had, you know, they start as a sophomore and they they select an academy and so they spend that year in the academy. If they decide they don't really like that, then they allow them to move to a different academy than for their junior and senior year. And so so there's certainly benefit in having some of that flexibility. What they would also say, though, is that the skills that they're learning, though, apply to really every, you know, aspect. And so it's not as if the student's really going to be penalized or behind if they chose one and they switch to another. I think all of us as parents would recognize the benefit of students learning and then deciding, no, maybe that's not what I want to do before they get on to post-secondary, you know, endeavors and save themselves some money and and things like that. So there is some flexibility to do that.
Any other comments, any other questions? Good, good, hey, thanks Doug, really appreciate that, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is, of course, the literacy update. Kate and Ryan.
Good evening. It should go without saying, the one skill that you certainly will know throughout your whole life, no matter what career path you choose, is the ability to read and write. We're going to talk about that tonight. Just speaking specifically of the goals connected to all these conversations tonight, invest in the future of our graduate student achievement. Strategic planning focus area, invest in the future of our graduates, content knowledge, specifically literacy as we speak tonight. I know Dr. Hanson mentioned this, maybe upstairs during dinner in terms of that, but I wanted to call out the specific goals that I know were presented to you guys last, was it last month, in September, I believe. These are all very specific to literacy and they're a lion's share of the specific superintendent goals that I know were shared with you. But I do want to call out that these are a primary focus. And I am going to read each one just to emphasize the priority focus that we put on literacy for that. As you know, we've talked about I read three proficiency, a significant amount. Our goal, and we believe that 95% of our students should pass the I read exam or increase by 7% from last year. I learn reading proficiency. One of our analysis of our work, and I know I've had the opportunity to talk to you guys previously in some work sessions specifically around the progress report, identified writing as a critical area of need for us. We discovered only 2.8% of our students in grades three through eight got a proficient score in the writing part of the I learn exam. One thing to draw in the Nashville experience that I know Rachel heard and those that were with me heard in terms of that, one of the things that I heard them say over and over in Nashville, an expectation was know where you are, but don't stay there, which resonated specifically with me. I know we coined the term stack the growth in those conversations in terms of that. But if I could add a layer on to that is, we know where we are and our charge is not to stay there in terms of that. And tonight, we're going to share some specific things we're doing in the literacy area in order to move in a positive direction. We've talked significantly about growth, as I just mentioned, stack the growth, that conditional growth percentile score that you know is so meaningful as we look at impacting impacting instruction, excuse me. And then the reading achievement score, as we talked, as growth increases, achievement increases, but the priority focus in ensuring that it's not just growth we're earning, it's students are achieving at higher levels as well. So these are all critical goals for us as a district that penetrate every building in some capacity. Similar to last year, we have a K three literacy plan. And in reality, this is a K 12 literacy plan, really a pre-K 12 literacy plan. The focus on K three has always been about the early indication, the criticalness of reading and literacy as it is in the early ages. We know that's why they have I read. But at the end of the day, the the specific focus of literacy penetrates every classroom. And tonight, we're going to have the opportunity to share how some of that looks in a lot of different components. So as I teed that up for Mrs. Schwartz here, she's going to share with you some very specific things that we're doing in the literacy realm in order to have that positive growth that we have come to expect.
Thank you. As you said, to meet those goals, we need to take some actions. We need to get busy on some of our projects. And so I'm just going to highlight a few of them tonight. One thing that I love about that literacy plan that was on the previous screen, I'll go back for just a second, is that it's also a very historical document. It really shows where we've been and what we've been doing. We add to that document, we don't take away. So you'll see some of the things that are from 2019 that we've just continued to add to our work. So the three focus areas I have for you tonight are the actions that we're taking around brain-based literacy and in increasing that professional learning for our teachers. We are also looking at how we're providing instructional guidance and supporting all of our classroom teachers. And then our third action step that I'll talk tonight about is our increased focus on writing and show you some of the good work that we have going on there. So our first one, again, going back and looking at 2019, we had 10 teachers that started this adventure with us called Brain-Based Literacy Course. And those 10 teachers worked through our first attempt at that course as we navigated that online class. And we also navigated a pandemic and we did this at home on Zoom and met together for hours at a time. And now I can tell you that we've, those numbers have increased to well over 200 teachers that have been trained over the first four cohorts of teachers. And this year, we brought in 167 more teachers and they're divided up against four cohorts. So we have an after-school K four cohort, we have an after-school five eight and preschool, they're a fun group, group together. And then we also have an online course where they can, the five eight teachers can work together online and the K four teachers can work together online. Teachers were able to make that choice and see which direction that they wanted to take and they are off and running with that course. I know we have a few people that are almost finished, they're wrapping it up. And we have some teachers that are pacing themselves out well. They also receive a book that goes along with that. So we are happy to say that they are reading and learning from those, that online course. Our second action step that we're talking about tonight is the work that we're doing around instructional guidance and the foundations for literacy. And so we've developed our literacy framework over the summer and past year. And we also were able to put together how we see the foundational skills in writing really kind of working together to help build those student achievements and academic outcomes for our students. In addition to that, as you know, we participate in a partnership with the Indiana Literacy Cadre. We jumped in as part of Cohort One when they rolled this out. And this year, they launched Cohort Two. We, in that partnership, we have a person, her name is Stephanie Woods. She's our support person from the Literacy Cadre. She comes to us and works with our partnerships in our schools. She works with our coaches, she works with principals, she meets with teachers, she's in our buildings quite frequently, actually, supporting us and giving us professional learning along the way. In addition to that, as you know, we have a fantastic coaching and specialist team led by myself and Mr. Russell, but also Amy Lurch, our literacy coordinator. And this year, we have expanded our coaching cycles to include OEL teachers. And we are also getting into more third and fourth grade coaching cycles this year. So this Literacy Cadre partnership, Cohort One, last year, we hosted an event here where the training took place in this room. And also districts from around the state, as far away as Gary and Southern Indiana, Washington area, were able to come to Eastridge and Pleasant Run and see the work that's happening in our classrooms. And they asked if this year, if they could come back and expand. So Cohort Two will be visiting us on November 6th and it's a very busy day. And we have, we will be going into six different buildings. They're doing this on charter buses because they're bringing 150 people to our district. And we didn't have enough room, so the charter buses meant we could only go to six locations, although they would love to see all nine. So those are our six buildings that we'll be seeing. And they will be touring for about an hour, hour and 15 minutes. And there's time for a debrief, time for them to give us some or ask some questions and to have some reflection time with principals and coaches. And finally, I'm excited to share the work that we've been doing around writing and increasing those academic responses. To reach those goals that we have, one of the things that we wanted to put in place was that we started writing daily. We know to get to polished writing, we need to write more. So we need to increase the number of times kids hold pencils in their hands, the number of times that kids have the opportunity to express themselves through writing and communicate in that way. In order to do that, the provisional writing focus, we started looking at what are all the opportunities that students have? This doesn't have to be just in your writing block, this is throughout your day. So looking at writing lessons, response writing, your daily sound spelling routine is an opportunity to write, and vocabulary lessons, anytime we can put a pencil in their hand and get them working on their writing skills. We also wanted to look at that as an application of the work that they're learning. So if you're learning vocabulary and you're writing it, that's a way to increase that rigor and look at those deeper application skills. And we've seen them really take off with this. So we've included a couple of examples here. The first one is a kindergarten classroom, this is our close reading response. So we're working on those close reading skills and, like I said, really showing that application of learning through writing. This is a middle one is students at fourth grade, for fourth grade at, I'm sorry, at Liberty Park, worked with their teacher, Mrs. Shields. She put together a group of students and they started working on their writing and they actually asked if they could put together a Patriot newsletter. I've only included one page for you, I'll get a copy for you. It's, I think it's four or five pages long and includes interviews with teachers, et cetera. It is a delightful read. And then also, one of the things that we also talk about is, as I mentioned, getting pencils in hands, right? So we have to work on handwriting skills, we have to work on the spelling skills, but we also have to work on transcribing. They may have a really great story when it comes to I learn testing or it comes to an end of year assessment, but they may not be able to get it out and into the computer in a timely manner. So we've also been working on increasing their opportunities to type and the keyboarding skills along with those. So this is a fourth grade lesson where they read a passage on tornadoes and then they wrote similar to a performance task, just in a quick snapshot. And they were able to type into that. So our students are producing multiple paragraph pieces and practicing those skills. And then also, we wanted to highlight that our, not only are we talking about writing more, not are we getting it out into professional development, et cetera, things like that, but also our coaches are really, and our principals are really working on celebrating the writing and providing that ongoing professional learning. So this is just a snapshot we're super excited about from Jennifer Rogers at Eastridge and her Wild About Wednesday writings where she includes different pieces that are happening in the building or across the day or across the week. And she also includes, like today, she sent out a really great article. So there's conversations happening, continuing to look at how we are increasing our knowledge around teaching students how to write. So with that, I will open it up for questions.
I am so excited because I have always said, reading and writing go together. And so when you get students writing, you're going to see improved progress because, you know, a light bulb effect just goes off and it just continues from there. know, a light bulb effect just goes off and it just continues from there. So thank you, great job, I'm excited about writing piece.
Good.
Are they doing cursive writing now in second grade?
Not in second. We work with a foundational, just handwriting manuscript, sorry, I couldn't think of that word for a second, in kindergarten, first and in second. And then those that, lessons that start around third grade.
Okay, so they start cursive writing in third grade now?
In our wonders curriculum, that's where it starts.
Okay. So they do encourage them to do cursive writing and when they write their stories and things in the third, at the third grade level?
We see some of that, we still see a lot of print as well, but we do incorporate those lessons in third grade.
Okay. Now, when you say you see a lot of it, is it encouraged where every student learns to do the cursive writing or is it just, you know, random?
I don't believe it's random, I would, I don't know the word. It's, it's part of their daily instruction and it's a part of how they look at handwriting, but looking at how widespread it is, I would need to look more into that.
I appreciate it because that's a great component. Our kids need to learn everything, not just regular manuscript, but also the cursive. So, you know, I'd be interested in finding out if that's encouraged and taught. Okay, thank you.
I heard you say something about writing earlier and I was thinking the same thing she is, that is that, you know, we've gotten away from cursive writing and, you know, the constitution is in cursive, kids can't read the constitution, they ain't doing no cursive writing, I'm not going to go there with that, but we got some kids that can't read the constitution because it's in cursive. But you, if you would go back to the, yes, no, come forward one. Yeah, right here on the left there, it's, I'm not sure how you, how they teach it here or how they teach it, but I know when I was in school 100 years ago, you had a similar sort of a thing there where you had two starred, two broad lines and then you had a little dotted line in the middle and you showed them how to do the letters and all that kind of business. And I was wondering if that was it because I'm thinking of cursive writing and I saw the little diagram and I don't know if that's it or not. Yeah, right there where it says bear feels.
Grumpy, yes.
Is that, is that part of cursive writing?
No, this is a kindergarten writing, so this is kindergarten.
Kindergarten writing.
So this is early in the year kindergarten and they will start to learn the downstairs, just like you were taught, and that some letters go downstairs below that line and will move that, child will move that G down and the Y down.
Okay, so it is similar to what we're talking about, that is writing and the degree you're teaching them how to use, make letters.
Yes, it starts with a letter formation and then they start working on placement on the paper.
And placement on the paper, okay. Well, anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm big too on the fact that we, we don't do cursive writing and I'm surprised you even said we did it. I thought maybe you were going to say that, no, we pull out the keyboard and get them to learn.
Do a lot of that too.
Which I didn't learn until 12th grade, the keyboard and typing. But the point is, that cursive writing, I think is sort of like, kind of gone away. I'm glad to hear that it is, we are still teaching it. I didn't think we did, to tell you the truth, I thought we just, you know, what, 2000, 2000, 2000, you know, we started moving more towards computers and all that kind of business and got away from having kids, you know, actually write. But I'm glad to hear that we are doing that because I think that's important, that we don't lose that skill. And I think we have quite a bit. You see people writing their signatures, it just looked terrible and not doctors either, so obviously they can't write. So my point is, that's my point. So I'm glad to hear that we're doing cursive writing and I'll let that go with that.
I know people in the audience, you guys probably want to kill me, but I have one more question, you know? Okay, could you go to the page before literacy plan? Okay, looking at the goals, when you said 95% or 7%, I want to know, how low was the I read and 7%? Is that going to give us a high percentage? Also, when you say 5% of growth from 50 or 5%, how low was it and will 5% put us at a decent level? I'm curious about that. Because I need to know what was the score and then 5%, what would that increase us? I, I don't want it to be low, I would still want it to be high. We want to keep our goals high. Because if you say 95% or, that means if we don't get to 95% and we only get that 7% and it's way down 50%, you know, we're still not making progress.
Totally understand. Our I read three achievement score last year was a 68.8 as recorded by the I D O E. So that 7% was generated because that would put us at the same rate of score of roughly, I can't do math in my head right now, 75 of our pre-pandemic level. Yeah, the highest we've ever been in Warren Township on I read three achievement is 78%. That was pre-pandemic in terms of that.
So that's still putting us below that and it's putting us low. So instead of saying 7%, we need to at least raise that up at least a 10%.
I don't want to misspeak here, but I believe these are the goals you guys approved last month.
These goals, we already approved.
Well, you know what, unfortunately, you know, we approve something that is, that need to be increased because if we only say 7%, at least we need to raise it up to 10% because we want to keep our goals high. And, you know, when you put that R in there, that looks good, that 95%, but in reality, if we don't get to 95%, we're all the way down to 75%, which is lower than what we, our highest score before. So I am just, you know, I'm sorry I didn't take note of this, you know, hindsight is, you know, what I'm going through right now, but I'm just really concerned about that because when we're talking about student progress, and I know our superintendent is working on goals to increase student progress, then we want to try to make sure our goals are high so that we can meet those goals and high expectations that we're trying to reach. And that's just sort of disappointing, that 7% and also that 5%.
May I say something? I really am glad to see the stamina that we're putting forth in the classrooms, making them write every day, building it up to a polished writing. That way, they're working on it and improving and improving and improving. I think that's what's going to help us raise some of our scores and I'm really glad to see that we have a framework for that. Thank you.
Got to hit that button, don't I? Any other comments?
Nice job, very nice job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Good, hey, great job, guys. Okay, projects and bond sales updates?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Hanson. We're excited to speak to you this evening about where we're at in terms of bond issuances and capital projects around the school district. When you drive around Warren Township right now, there's a lot of construction underway. We've got a lot of great things going on in our buildings and so we thought it was a good point to update the school board on where those projects are. In terms of structure, I'm going to spend the first portion of the presentation talking through outstanding debt and specific bond issuances, a few of our larger capital projects. Then Mr. Clayton's going to take over and speak about some of our construction projects happening outside of the large ones that we highlight at the board meetings every two months and some forward-looking things at Warren Central. And then we have a couple of guests in the room, partners from Powers and Sons that we're looking forward to introducing to the school board. So all of our capital projects, these are, these are wide-ranging items. They deal with board goals of investing in the physical and psychological safety and security and wellbeing of our students and staff, ensuring financial wellness and across the strategic plan. The capital work we're doing hits essentially every portion of the strategic plan, investing in people, the future of our graduates, meeting the needs of the whole child, efficiencies and environment. So board members, I want to just take a quick moment and share with you where we're at in terms of bonds that have been issued over recent years and what we have coming up in the near term. And I'm going to talk in just a moment about facility study from 2017 that, that led to this. We're in a series over a few years of issuing what are called first mortgage bonds. Those are the large bonds that we issue for the big capital projects we're doing around the district. Our first series of them was in 2019, Phase Two we issued in 2021, and then over the course of 2023, we've been issuing first mortgage bonds and I'll talk in just a minute specifically about what those are covering. I do want to point out one thing that I think is logistically to, to make the school board aware of, and that's what we see on the bottom two lines here. So board, as you'll recall, last winter, we asked the, the board for approval to sell $59 million in bonds to fund what we're calling Phase Three at Warren Central High School. That's primarily the work in the G and H hallways, but other portions of the building as well. We're going to split that into two separate sales, so, so the board's already taken all the actions required, but instead of having one 59 or 56 million dollar issuance, we're going to sell $28 million tomorrow and then we're going to sell $28 million roughly again in the fall of 2024 to finance the current portion of Warren Central, current portion of the Warren Central renovation. And then all throughout too, over the last few years and on an ongoing basis moving forward, we'll periodically issue general obligation bonds. Those are covering things like school buses, service vehicles, smaller capital projects around the school district. They typically have short paybacks, so we sold general obligation bonds and just received cash proceeds yesterday. We'll have those paid off by June of 2024. So usually the first mortgage bonds are the larger ones, paid back over a longer period of time. General obligation bonds typically smaller, paid back more quickly. Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate it, thank you for the reminder on that. Just for the board's awareness, we've got a really cool opportunity coming up tomorrow. So as I mentioned, tomorrow's the day that we're selling $28 million in first mortgage bonds to fund the first portion of Warren Central Phase Three. And we've got a cool student experience that we've incorporated into it this time. So we've got about 30 students who are in a second year finance course at Walker Career Center. And we're going to take two hours in the morning while we're going through the bond sale, exposing them to what the day of the bond sale looks like. So we'll have our underwriter with us, we'll have our financial advisor with us, our bond counsel with us, and they're going to see the same things that I see on the day that we sell bonds. We'll get an update on what's happening in the bond market, we'll give them an opportunity to hear how we're going to use the cash to, to fund projects. And then we're going to take a, a career exploration component to it too. So these are folks who are interested in business at the Walker Career Center and we're going to give them an opportunity to learn from folks that are working in the business space right now about what some opportunities could be for the future. So Ms. Williams, to your point about making students aware of, of opportunities for careers that, you know, maybe we don't see every day, this is kind of a unique opportunity and we're excited. We've never done this before and I think it's going to be great for our students. So the, the background on the first mortgage bonds in particular, all came from the facility study and really it even goes back, I point out 2017 here, it really goes back even 20 years before that. So, so we're in a 20-year cycle that's, we're kind of in the second phase of it. So if we think back to Vision 2005, so that's the time that Brookview, the new, the new Brookview and Liberty Park were built, when Warren Central was expanded with the Field House, that was all part of Vision 2005. Those bonds were paid off over a 20-year period. The board and the administration recognized that those bonds were getting ready to be paid off and so it was time to look for our next round of, of capital projects. So in 2017, the school district commissioned a facility study with C S O and Skilman and other folks from the district at the table. The result of that facility study was ambitious. So in, in $2017, that study identified $250 million worth of potential work that could happen around the school district. At the time, the, the district, the board administration recognized that we could take on probably $125 million, you know, on a way that we could plan for responsibly from a tax rate perspective. The decision that the, the team made at the time was, we, we recognized that there were some inequalities in the experience that our elementary school students were having. And so we've invested pretty heavily in elementary schools over the last six years, updating classrooms, building new gyms, cafeterias, things to, to improve the elementary school experience. And then of course, we've invested heavily in Warren Central High School, which is the, the gem of the east side of Indianapolis and will be for generations to come. But that facility study was sort of the genesis of, of the work we've seen over the last six years and what we've got in the next few years as well. So I just, and I'll go through this quickly because Mr. Clayton does such a great job of, of covering these at the board every two months. Just for context, I want to remind everybody about what we've done with first mortgage bonds over the last couple of years. So in 2019, we sold $35 million worth of bonds to find, finance work at Lowell Elementary School and Warren Central. Lowell at this point is a beautiful elementary school, of course. Classroom renovations throughout, new gym, new cafeteria. Phase one at the high school involved a lot of site work, especially on the west side of the building, parking improvements, traffic flow, performing arts improvements, the multipurpose field, Hall of Fame, those were all Phase One items at Warren Central. In 2021, the first mortgage bonds we sold were for what we call Phase Two. This was for capital work at Grass Creek Elementary School, Pleasant Run Elementary School and in Warren Central again. So at, at the elementarys, again, we did classroom renovations, new gyms, new playgrounds, traffic improvements, parking improvements. Warren Central and Walker Career Center, the most noteworthy changes from Phase Two are the reconfiguration of the front offices in both those spaces. I hope everybody's had a chance at this point to get over to, to Warren Central and Walker Career Center, much more inviting ways to get into the building. It's a good way to greet our students, to greet our families and patrons that come to visit us. And then on 2023, so we've got three first mortgage bond issuances from this year. 2023 A is funding the renovation at East Ridge Elementary School, $16 million. If you've been able to see that on 10th Street, the new gym is coming along well, improved parking, improved traffic flow. 2023 B is for $21 million at Hawthorne and new gym, classroom renovations. At this point, the classroom renovations are essentially finished. They've moved on to renovating the, the former gym area, main office area. That project's going to be largely complete over the course of 2024. And then finally, I mentioned, we've split the, the high school into two separate issuances, so we've got the $28 million that we'll sell tomorrow and that's funding Phase Three at the high school. A lot of HVAC work is part of, is part of Phase Three, especially all throughout, again, the, the portion that runs along 16th Street, the G hallway, the parallel H hallway, and then the perpendicular hallways. We'll also be doing classroom and restroom renovations throughout those spaces, relocating the counseling center out of what's currently, where it's currently at on the south side of the building and moving it to what was the principal's office in the middle of the building, close to the commons area. And then finally, next year, we'll also sell, we were estimating right now between 25 and 28 million dollars worth of first mortgage bonds. That will fund some of the work that the board has already approved. So again, those G and H hallway renovations, also classroom renovations in the Career Center and in the, in the industrial drive. But then we're also going to take a look at some additional work that needs to happen within the building and over the course of the next year, we're, we're laying the groundwork to, to take on some additional needed items. And Mr. Clayton's going to get into a little bit more depth on those, but they, they deal with things like physical education, security, we're going to have some athletics components to it, some changes to the performing arts center. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Before I, I jump into it, I want to introduce two of our guests that are here. When Matt and I joined the team in 2021, one of the, the first things that the board challenged us and encouraged us to do was to make sure that we diversify the companies of businesses that we partner with through this construction process. So I'm, I'm really happy to introduce our, our partners from Powers and Sons, minority-owned construction company, Mammon Powers III. Put your hand up, sir. As well as Chris Kearns. Thank you for joining us tonight and we'll talk a little bit here shortly about the opportunity we have to partner together over at the high school. Some key project updates, starting with Creston, fall break was a great time for us to get some work done throughout the district. We focused on, we're really going to phase a lot of these, these improvements in, these renovations in, starting with classroom flooring. We have seven classrooms at Creston that we targeted that has new flooring and that just adds to some of the rooms that we've already done, as well as painting, student furniture, staff furniture. And we replaced flooring and painted various fifth grade classes over fall break and currently collecting pricing and on full build, on the full building. The estimated investment that we'll make in, make at Creston is around $2 million. That's what we have earmarked right now and that's in addition and just from the, the board visit we had there a few weeks ago, some of the investments we've made in the cafeteria, about 800,000 that we made to improve the serving lines, which, talking with Dr. Naylin, as well as our partners from Char Wells, it's really improved the efficiency and the speed in which we're able to serve our students. At Renaissance, also, we were able to get some classroom flooring done, as well as the multipurpose room flooring, which we're, we're focusing on now. We replaced flooring in various classrooms over fall break, collecting prices on the remaining classrooms in the primary corridor. And right now, we're earmarking about $250,000 that we're going to invest over at Renaissance. At the Early Childhood Center, if you haven't had a chance to see it, just wait until next month because that'll be part of our construction update. But that front entrance, major renovation there at the front entrance, which really supports our safety initiative to create those safe entryways for our buildings. We're doing, getting started with some pretty substantial HVAC work. Playground, staff break room. And from some of the items I just listed, we were able to complete the front entrance and staff break room over fall break. HVAC controls will be completed in 2024. And the playground will be completed in 2024. Now, the investment that we're making with the HVAC controls, if you recall, going back, you know, a few years ago, it took us about a year to get a lot of those, well, let's just say, a lot of the equipment in. As it relates to the HVAC, that's just how backed up the supply chain was at that time, as well as some of our other buildings. So, and then in addition to that, there's certain time of year that you have to install those pieces as well. So that's something we're conscious of. That's why we're projecting 2024 for that. Estimated investment at Early Childhood Center is going to be about 1.3 million. Matt talked a lot about the high school, but some of the additional investments that we've, that we'll make there, you know, we've already talked with the board about weapons detection units that we would like to install there to create a more safe entry into the building. Freshman Academy Flooring, Performing Arts Center. I think we have a meeting Friday or tomorrow, Friday, to get some specifics as far as timelines with the work that'll take place in the Performing Arts Center. It's an old facility now and it's time that it receives a little love. East locker room at the stadium. And that's the opportunity we have to partner with Powers and Sons. Stadium lighting, cooling tower, boilers, roofing over the G and H hallways, which G and H will be a part of our Phase 3 work that will take place at the high school. But part of that, that we've discussed over the past several months is we want to make sure, if we're going to make that investment in renovating that space, we want to make sure that the roof over the new space is going to be good, right? The estimate investment there at the high school is going to be about $15 million. We already talked about Powers and Sons and they've also done work in IPS, Lawrence and Wayne. And right now, again, we're looking, we're partnering with Powers and Sons to be our construction managers for the Warren Central Stadium locker room renovation. And just some additional areas, we continue to replace chalkboards with whiteboards, providing updated printers in some of our buildings. At Porter, we're just in the process, I believe we purchased 13 school buses, new buses, new propane tank, fuel pumps, a bus lift for the garage, as well as our service vehicles. And here at the WCC, if you haven't noticed, we're due for some new flooring ourselves here, carpet. So we call it tradition, but it's time for tradition to graduate, so. Next steps, we will ask for board approval on bids and contracts in the next months ahead. And our contractors will continue building renovations through 2025. And the last thing I want to say about Powers and Sons, they also have an exceptional record in terms of identifying minority contractors as well to take part in their projects. So happy to answer any questions.
Next steps, do you have a timeline on the renovations and things that you're doing at Creston? You know?
So Ms. Williams, what I'd tell you, probably one of the biggest challenges we have now in terms of just renovations is we don't really have a summer anymore. And what I mean by that is because our summer's pretty much is about eight weeks and that's if we don't have summer school or other activities taking place, that window's real narrow. So in essence, what we're doing, working with Dr. Naylon is, he's been great to work with. So what we'll do is we'll phase it in. So for example, we just did seven classrooms over break. Once we complete that work, then he'll release probably another five or six classrooms for us to work on. So we plan on doing those renovations specifically at Creston throughout the year. The furniture, that's ongoing. And I believe, Matt, that's winter break. That's when we'll have all new student desks, as well as new furniture for staff as well.
It's going to be ongoing all throughout the year?
Yes.
Okay. I know I had mentioned some particular items. Is that included in these renovations throughout the year? So I was just interested because I wanted to know, when can we go back and revisit to see what improvements have been made?
So as far as the, if you want to see the latest work that's been completed over fall break, I would say probably here in the next few weeks, to be able to go back and see those seven classrooms.
No, I mean, there are some other major things that need to be done. So how long do you think that some of these other tasks can be done so that we won't just be running back every time you do a little bit and then you do a little bit more? You know, when you've done a substantial amount, then maybe you can tell us when we can come back and revisit.
How about we do this? We'll put together a list of projects and timelines that we can share with the board, just so you can kind of follow through with that. Okay.
Any other questions? Good presentation. Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, next order of business are action items. We've got six action items to vote on. What I'd like is, Ryan, if you could go ahead and just rattle them off, the first five. And then after you're done, we can get...
Excuse me, yellow cards?
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Do we have any yellow cards?
No, but we do have to ask. And also, I would prefer we didn't vote on them all together.
Oh, you want to go one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that.
Except for the grouping at the end.
I'm easy.
Except for the grouping at the end, that's policy, staff, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, so what we'll do is, how about if we go, like being suggested, we'll go one at a time. First action item is student activism. A new action item.
Sorry.
A new policy.
Last month I brought all of these. There's one change that was made that I'll get to at the end, but that's policy 2221. But that's been updated. But first one up is 5720, that's student activism. Happy to answer any questions, but would ask for your approval at this time.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call for the vote. Motion carries.
Next up is 2414, reproductive health and family planning and human sexuality. Again, happy to answer any questions, but I'm asking for your approval at this time.
So moved.
Can we get a second? Any discussion? Let's go for the vote. Motion carries.
Next up is policy 2416. This is student privacy and parental access to information. Happy to answer any questions, but I'd ask for your approval at this time.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Can we get a second? Any discussion? Can we go for the vote? Motion carries.
Next up, policy 9700, relations with special interest group. Happy to answer any questions, but asking for your approval at this time.
So moved.
All second.
Any discussion? Can we go for the vote? Motion carries.
Last but not least, at least for me, policy 2221, mandatory curriculum. As I mentioned before, Rachel contacted me earlier this week. If you look at bullet I, we did remove, pregnancy was listed twice. Once is out of wedlock and once just as pregnancies. We just removed one of the pregnancies. It's still, but now it just says out of wedlock pregnancy. If you have any questions, ask Rachel, but...
Can we go for a motion?
Yeah, thank you.
All moved.
Can we get a second? Any discussion? We'll go for the vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next action item, last action item, staff-student relations, Brian Simpkins.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. In August, I brought for discussion these new policies, 1213.01, 3213.01, and 4213.01 for administration, professional staff, and support staff regarding staff-student relationships. We took a timeout in September to take a closer look at, in particular, the final section that has to do with examples of inappropriate boundary invasions. And so these new policies are just intended to specifically address staff-student relations that may constitute criminal conduct, child abuse or neglect, inappropriate boundary invasions or conduct on becoming a staff member. And then they've been updated to include child seduction as a conduct that may constitute a crime according to the Indiana Code. So I seek your approval.
Any comment?
Thank you for the edit.
Yes.
We get a motion?
So moved.
All second.
Any discussion? We'll go for the vote. Motion carries. That includes all the action items. We don't have any discussion items. We'll start with closing remarks. On my right, Gloria.
First of all, I would like to thank everyone for being here and I hope you had a great short vacation. You know, we'll say a break, vacation break. And I just wanted to mention one thing. You know, we all make mistakes and I'll be the first to admit it. Ryan, when you brought your report, you know what? I guess being an educator, you know, retired, I always set my goals high. And it was an oversight on my part that we've already voted on that percentage. Because I think that as a district, we need to always set our standards high. Because if we don't, we're going to always fall below. So we want to move forward and not backwards. You said that our highest score was 79%. If we only do 7% and you add that to your 68, that's 75. So that means we're going backwards instead of forward. So our percentage should have at least been 15%, which would have given us 83%. So if we didn't make 95%, at least we would have been in the 83 percentile. You see what I'm saying? That is still setting our goals high. But when you go backwards to 75, that's even below where we used to be. That's saying that, why are we doing that? You know, why are we doubting ourselves? You know, we are educators and we need to know that we know that we can have these students to achieve. And so we need to set high goals. And I'm just sort of disappointed, and I'll be the first one to say, I apologize for overlooking that. I made a mistake for approving that because I was wrong. We need to move forward with higher goals. And those percentages need to be changed from 7% to at least 15%. Now, the second one, we had 5%. I didn't get a chance to look at that, but I'm pretty sure that was low too because that 5% still didn't put us high enough. So 95, that's the first thing you look at. But when you put that R in there, that means you're going to settle for the R if you don't reach the 95. So we want to try to make sure moving forward that our goals are high. I'm just really disappointed in that. And I apologize to all of you for my hindsight and not paying attention to that because I'm guilty of letting that slide and that's not good. We, as a district, need to keep our standards high, set our goals high, and strive to reach those high goals. Thank you.
Let me just say that we all, we appreciate your... Oops, recognizing that maybe there was been an oversight. But, you know, we all were able to see those things. They were presented real properly and professionally and accurately, I believe. And so we're going to, so I'm saying that we need to move forward with where we are. We are making progress. That is, that goal may not be as high as you would like it to be, but it is progress. And then we've got some challenges. And that's probably one of the challenges to make it even better. But right now, I think we're satisfied with the fact that we've got a pretty good challenge right there with what we've got right now. And maybe in the future, we'll just raise it up again and just make more progress.
Thank you. I'm glad you said that because, you know, to me, if a student's making an F, then you say, oh, well, you moved to a D minus, that's still failing. See, I used to tell my kids, you can at least see your way out. So my goals have always been a C and above. Fs and Ds are unacceptable. If you make, if you're an F and then you just move to a D minus, that's still unacceptable. I'm, you know, I'm speaking from an educator standpoint and I am sorry. That's a sore spot with me. That's very important to me, to set high goals for our students and help our students to achieve. Thank you.
Kevin?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for your time and your work and your effort and the passion. Obviously, we are all passionate about our youth and the development. And I'm confident, I've seen enough, that these, all these things can be achieved. And we take them a step at a time as we approve on our levels. We are proving on our... We are improving on our, improving on our buildings, we're updating there, and we're going to continue to grow with new GLIs and all the various government policies of changing education constantly that we must adjust around. But the ultimate goal, I'm sure we all share the same thing, is the passion for our children. So we all want them to have the best and do the best and to exceed the best they can. Thank you.
Julie?
Well said. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for your energy and your creativity and your ability to just do what's best for our kids. So thank you very much.
Can we start on your end down here, Rachel?
Sure. I have a really long list of things I did this month, so I'm just very well. But I do want to say that we're approaching the end of the cross-country season, state is Saturday, and Grant Coburn, a high school senior, placed ninth at regionals and is moving on to state. So, yeah, first one for the boys in a decent, and he's an amazing runner, so. And an amazing kid. I've known him 13 years now, so yeah. Among the many things I have done, one of the most interesting things I did was attend an ITIA and Next Tech tech talk, and it was on computer science education and the impacts of artificial intelligence. And it was just really, really mind-opening, and it was an incredibly interesting panel discussion. And I've got some notes from it I may share at a later date, but it was just, it was... You know, we all remember ChatGPT going live less than a year ago, and now the implications within education as a whole are just pretty massive, especially when it comes to things like computer coding. So it was just, it was really amazing. The other thing I wanted to say is that since the beginning of October, because I've had just a weird month, I have been in libraries, in schools, in Virginia, Tennessee, Ohio, and Indiana. And October is Band Books Month, and they all had just absolutely amazing displays discussing the importance of teenagers and students being able to access books, and the importance of kind of keeping along the lane of making sure that that accessibility exists. And so it was just really great to see that in every library I went to, and I spent a lot of time in random school libraries this month, that those displays were all there and that the kids were interacting with them.
Rachel, I still have my...
Band books puzzle.
Crossword puzzle, jigsaw puzzle.
Yeah, so quickly, I went to Clue. It was great. I texted Tim at the halfway point at the intermission, and he was at the same one that I was at. And it was just, it was really great. It's always good seeing our kids and their talents and what they can put out there. And seeing the audience interact with the kids is always a wonderful time. And yeah, we'll just leave it at that. Terry?
Terry?
I really appreciated going to the school visits. But I think the administrators and at Creston are student mentors or student leaders. Really nice to see some of the improvements and then see improvements that we do need to make in our buildings. Appreciated the four next-generation meeting with everybody and collaborating with our community and our... Everyone who works with us and just invested in our kids. It was just great to see all the different outreaches, parents, students, all in one room collaborating for the good in the future and to give a great opportunity to our kids in the future. In your chats, there was an interesting article, if you got your journal this week in the mail, it talks about artificial intelligence and the implications of what it's, schools are saying it's bad, but what are the skills that our children are going to need in the future? So it's a good read. If you haven't read it, I really suggest it. And thank you all for your reports tonight and keeping us very well informed. We appreciate you. I appreciate you. I appreciate you.
Shauna?
Oh, ditto, Rachel, for the sake of time. I've been very busy this month within the community, but I truly appreciate the school visits and the hospitality that we were given. Thank you all for everything that you've done. IT, we could not exist without you being there and helping, keeping us on track and connected. I just want to uplift the Fall Festival this weekend. We are having the Peace Walk, so any schools, admin, if you all want to come, join us. On Saturday, we will meet here at Central Office at 8:30 a.m. And walk to MCRC where we will engage into our Fall Festival. We have lots of giveaways, a free farmer's market with all kinds of produce. So encourage your families to come out and receive a lot of resources. We have over 70 vendors signed up, so looking to have a great time. Wave is sponsoring the Pumpkin Batch, so please come out and support. We are looking forward with it. Let's let our light shine on the east side. I know over the weekend, I was in Nicaragua for about 11 days, but another 15-year-old was killed on the east side. So let's show our youth that we care about them and get out in the community and rally support and take back our streets. Thank you. Lineup will start at 8:30. We will begin promptly at 9:30 to start our walk. We have a permit that allows a certain amount of time to close off all the streets so everyone can be safe. So we want to be respectful of that and start promptly at 9:30.
Well, well, well. We've finished another board meeting. I just want to say that, you know, we packed a whole lot of stuff since September to now into a very short agenda board meeting. So just want to say that we were able to get it done. Hey, really appreciate you guys' help in putting together your presentations and all. It was super top, super, as usual. Hope to see all you guys out there on Saturday. Meeting adjourned.